My apologies, everyone. We had some special guests in the hall that I was out saying hi to, so I'm sorry that we're starting a little bit late. We will begin our regular city council meeting for Monday, May 5th with our opening ceremonies, and I'd like to invite Councilman Bruce Wouters to lead us through that.
Please bow your heads. Gracious Lord, thank you for the gift of this today. Please bless our first responders, keep them safe, and keep all our community safe, Lord. We need you. Lord, please give this honorable dais the wisdom and guidance to do your will, so our city can shine like a beacon on a hill. Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, it is my great good pleasure to introduce the Weebloos Den from Cub Scout Pack 15, led by Mr. Smith, part of the North Florida Council. These fourth grade scouts are building character, leadership, and a commitment to service. The Cub Scout program is built on a mission to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the scout oath and law. Their motto is "Do Your Best", and that's exactly what they're doing. Please join me in welcoming the Weebloos Den from Pack 15 as I now invite them to lead us in the Cub Scout oath and the Cub Scout law. Well done. You are excused. Thank you.
Thank you, Scouts. Thank you, Mr. Wouters, for organizing that special presentation. We're very glad to have you. For as long as you guys are willing to stay, we're happy to have you. I will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember... Councilmember Golding?
Here.
Councilmember Horn?
Here.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sutton?
Here.
Councilmember Wagner? Councilmember Wouters?
Here.
Mayor Hoffman? Here. Moving to approval of minutes?
I moved that we approved the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on April 21st, 2025.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B?
I move that we approve the minutes from the special council briefing held on April 28th, 2025.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Announcements. Mr. Jansen?
I went really quick, so I'll have one fast one. So, fellow scouts, my son is in Scouts and he is attending a scout meeting tonight at 7:00 PM where he has his border review to become a life scout. So, he's one step away from Eagle and I'm very proud of him. I told him, though, that if the Eagle presentation happens on the night of the city council, sorry, City of Jacksonville Beach, I'm going to that instead.
That is an excused absence.
That's it. Thank you.
Congratulations to Coulson. Ms. Golding?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several announcements because it's been rather busy the last couple of weeks. Just wanted to mention that a few of us went to the VLSC graduation that was held right before the beach's opening parade, and just want to recognize our amazing volunteers who contribute to our lifesaving here at the beach, all because they care about our community, and just want to welcome the new graduates that are... that just graduated. And then also wanted to mention that the beach's opening parade was wonderful. If anybody didn't make it, you missed it. It was a great parade this year. And then this past Saturday, we had the Paz Park 20th Anniversary Celebration. This is our dog park here in Jackson Beach, and for those of you who may not know, it was the first public municipal dog park in Duval County to open 20 years ago. And I want to recognize Savannah, who is here tonight. She works for our Parks and Rec Department, and she organized the event. It was a great event. Thank you, Savannah, for everything that you did. I think all the people and pups had a great time. Also want to recognize the Hines family who was there. They're a family whose son used to go to the park. His name is Josh, and he was tragically murdered, and he loved going to the park. So, the family has poured their heart into the dog park in his memory and have made a lot of improvements to the dog park. They were there with donuts and coffee, and they were also had an opportunity to say some things about Josh so that we could remember him. And then also, the participants enjoyed some really cute cookies. There were 20th Anniversary Dog Bandannas for the dogs, and a lot of great vendors that participated in the event. So, thank you so much, Savannah. Did you... were you wanting to say something? Oh, okay, so Savannah has gifts. She comes bearing gifts.
I have bandanas for the ones who weren't able to.
Thank you.
Technically, it is a human.
Savannah actually wore her bandanas, so you could do that too.
That was not a slight on the city manager. Mr. Horn needs two, for sure.
Oh, boy. Cookies left over.
Are those pet cookies?
No, those are people cookies. They're people cookies, yes. So, again, thank you, Savannah, for such a great job. It was a fun event, and you did an amazing job. I also want to mention that our... the next Beaches Watch meeting is this Wednesday, and the topic is our beaches interlocal agreements. History of conflict and compromise. A lot of people may not know what has transpired over the years with regard to the interlocal agreements with Jacksonville and why we have what we have. And so, Bill Golliford and George Forbes, he was the city manager here in Jacksonville Beach when the interlocal agreements were negotiated. They will be the guest speakers. It will be Wednesday at the Beaches Branch Library at 7:00. It will be a very, very interesting meeting to hear all the stories that they both have to tell and help us better understand where we are, why... how we got to where we are. And there's going to be discussion about Ocean County as well, which is... should be very interesting. And then I wanted to mention that the legislative session is over, but it's not over. But, the good news is that several bills that we were concerned about, the CRA bill, the accessory dwelling unit bill, the sovereign immunity bill, the local business tax bill, and the enterprise fund transfer bill, they all died because they did not make it through to the end of the session. So, I would just like to recognize Rep. Michael and Senator Yarborough, who both advocated for Jacksonville Beach the entire session. Thanks to them, and especially thanks to Senator Yarborough, he kept some of these bills from actually going anywhere on the Senate side. So, we... I definitely want to shout out to both of them and look forward to continuing to work with them in the coming year because these bills are probably going to be coming back. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Golding, Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. Second, a number of the things that Councilwoman Golding mentioned. Thanks to everyone that was able to attend the VLSC graduation last weekend. Very meaningful for that organization, and I believe there were four or five new recruits that graduated, and they'll be starting on the new summer class immediately. So, looking forward to that, or even larger class, hopefully. Let's see, what else? In the parade, obviously. We had good participation in the parade. Councilwoman Golding and I were voted favorite cart there. She and I were the only two to vote, but, you know, it was a good time, I think, was had by all, and what a great weekend for opening weekend with the weather. Today was the 27th Annual Fishbait Thompson Golf Tournament for the VLSC, which is one of their largest fundraisers for the VLSC, and they had a capacity showing, I think 36 teams or something like that. We had a number of council folks represented on teams, and want to congratulate Councilman Wouters for coming in third out of the council teams that were represented. There were three teams, so in case you're counting, Bruce, that means you came in last. Big congratulations to Councilman Horn. He came in 36th place last year and got a trophy for that, believe it or not. It was embarrassing. But he jumped all the way, seriously jumped all the way to the fourth place team this year. So, congratulations to your team, and he got a closest to the pin today. So, I'm not sure what was going on, but congratulations on that and appreciate both of y'all being there for the great turnout. So, I think that's it.
Do we even want to know where Councilman Sutton's team finished in this tournament?
First last year.
First last year?
Yeah.
Okay. Got you. All right.
Well, we came in fifth. So, congratulations, Councilman Horn, on being the top council team.
You have a year to lord that over his head.
We were right behind Councilman Wouters' team today. They were very deliberate.
Mr. Horn?
Yeah, I was going to say, I will just comment a couple of things here. Yes, if anybody understands the concept of a mulligan, because this is a fundraiser, you can purchase these. I just want to say that our team was very, very focused on the fundraising efforts today, and that did assist us in our efforts. The Volunteer Life Saving Corps, I will say this, their class was a winner of '25, and one of the things that, if you guys ever noticed, I was summer of '87 when I joined, and it's one of those things when you introduce yourself to somebody, you give them your name and your year, and we have a winter class and a summer class, and sometimes there's a first and a second summer. So, if you, like you were mentioning earlier, Sandy, you said it's winner of '25. Super proud of them. I think it was '5. And I also just want to say, you guys with the Boy Scouts, that is just awesome. It takes a lot to get up here. Super proud of you, super proud of everything you guys are doing, and keep it up, okay? This is... the lessons you're learning right now will keep you through the rest of your life. And it's funny, as you guys were up here giving your oath and saying your pledge, I was watching some people in the crowd that were still mouthing that because even as adults, they still remember those things, and it'll stick with you for the rest of your life. So, great job.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Mr. Wouters?
Yes, I wanted to recognize Mr. Carlson for also here, being here. And I did want to make it the record clear that we were honest in our storekeeping. Thank you.
Never mentioned that that was one of the rules.
What is ignorance of the law is not a... something like that. We're not normally this froggy. We've got an audience, a larger audience than normal today, so please excuse my colleagues. But congratulations on a great tournament. And a few other things I already mentioned. Great job to... Parks and Rec has had a busy couple of weeks, pulling off a parade with the most ever entrance. So, putting 70-plus floats and organizations together in a really smooth and seamless way is no small feat. They also had the Sandcastle Contest on Saturday, which apparently was a lot of fun. I had a conflicting event, wasn't able to make it. And then the Paz Park Anniversary was a great time. The first dog, Gracie, enjoyed herself thoroughly and took a great big nap when we got home from that, as did the mayor. We also have this week Seawalk Sessions, which is a free concert out in the Latham Plaza Seawalk area. Traditionally rains on Seawalk Session days, so only 58% right now. I just checked. So, hopefully, we will be good to go. And then on Friday night, we have our Moonlight Movies, which this week is Top Gun Maverick. So, if you haven't seen that on a gigantic screen outside under the stars, now is your chance. I want to recognize, we have a lot of special guests today, but I do want to recognize, and I looked this up about five minutes after being elected mayor the first time, mayors continue to be called mayor. It is technically correct to continue to call them mayor. She's rolling her eyes. Are you all ready? Mayor Ellen Glasser of Atlantic Beach is here with us today. I believe she is here to advocate for the smoking on the beach issue. Sorry, it's last up on the agenda, so this won't be the first long council meeting you've sat through, so appreciate you being here, Mayor Glasser. Any other announcements from council? Okay, we'll get started with courtesy of the Florida visitors. If, when I call your name, come on up to the podium. Looks like the light is already green, so the microphone is hot, and you will have three minutes to address the council on topic of your choosing. Start with your name and address. Leo Kreisel.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to address regarding the 900-day construction project. I reside on Second Street South between Sixth and Seventh Avenue South for reference. I would like to begin by saying that I'm not against these improvements in progress, nor the necessary construction. I'm all for it. I see the results and the good that comes from it. However, our street has been under construction since December of 2024 and remains in disrepair. The conditions have been hazardous with debris and construction waste littering the streets, including chunks of concrete, exposed cables, pipes, and various tripping hazards, only to be removed when asked for by complaint to the contractor. On April 14th, 2025, three weeks ago, at 8:00 AM, I received a knock at my door from a contractor employee informing me that my driveway was being taken out of commission, and I was advised to move my vehicles immediately or risk being stranded. I received no prior written notice, no mailbox flyer, nothing. When I inquired as to where we were supposed to relocate our cars, the contractor was unable to provide an answer. I also asked how long the service disruption was expected to last. He again stated he did not know, but suggested it could be two weeks. I subsequently contacted the city and spoke to Mr. Fox, who informed me that we could park at Oceanfront Park and that we should have been issued parking passes, and we should have been informed of this by the contractor, which had never occurred. My first question for council is, why do we not have a standard of performance to restore property access within a defined timeframe? It's already been three weeks. Is it two weeks, three weeks, a month? What is the contractor standard? No one seems to know, and I contacted Mr. Dupree, and we discussed it, and he also said there wasn't one and he didn't know. While Oceanfront Park is a viable solution for resident parking during the week, it becomes overcrowded with beachgoers on the weekends. Cones are disregarded, tossed aside, making it nearly impossible to reclaim parking spaces until after hours. On Saturday, May 3rd, my wife was stranded, contacted Jackson Beach Police Department non-emergency number, spoke with Sergeant Shackelford requesting assistance. Sergeant Shackelford informed her that it was not his responsibility, as the cones were not police cones. He was not accountable for ticketing or towing from the lot for resident spaces. The parking passes were received were not his to enforce. Being told despite a public-facing official that we as residents must spend for ourselves is concerning. So, during the construction and the beach-going season, who is responsible for ensuring that residents who have no place to park at their houses have a place to park? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kreisel. Dale Templin?
Hi, my name is Dale Templin. I live at 612 Second Street South. I appreciate y'all's opportunity to talk. I'm kind of going to go back a few months. Back kind of the end of last year, I notified the city that the Dune Walkover at Sixth Avenue, where First and Sixth meet. It's listed as handicap accessible, but it is not. People... my mom was dying, and she wanted to get across to see the ocean one last time. I was not able to let her have that wish before she died because it was not safe. Jumped forward a little bit. I've contacted numerous offices, kind of given the runaround. Well, Saturday, my mother-in-law's here, out of town. We're walking over that same walkover. She's 85 years old. She fell, broke a rib. She was at Baptist Beaches all evening, Saturday evening. She's now at my house. And guess who's taking care of her? I just... I see assisted living facilities, two of the two local ones, go to that park where the dolphin is, and they're able to go and enjoy that park, but they can't get to go even walk over and see the ocean. And it's listed on the website that this is a handicap accessible area, and it is not. And so now, my mother-in-law is at home right now suffering. I mean, she's suffering. She's 85 years old. There's very little pain medicine that an 85-year-old can take. You know, I just need some resolution here because it's not fair that people cannot, with disabilities, or senior citizens, they should be able to have the same rights that we all do and enjoy our beautiful beach. So, I really appreciate y'all looking into that.
Thank you, Ms. Templin.
And I don't know if y'all want pictures or...
You can certainly leave that with the clerk. Absolutely. Thank you. Sure. Thank you for being here. And I know if parents need to hop up and go get your scout, you are welcome to do that. I think everybody might have already gone. Curtis Loftus?
Am I on timer?
Not yet.
Not yet?
I know better.
Oops, nope. All right. Curtis Loftus, 1280 Mayport Landing Drive, Atlantic Beach, Florida. It's great to be in front of you guys tonight. Couple of things I didn't expect to mention. Was honored to be with some Beaches Legends at the Beaches Museum just recently, the Recognizing Class of 2025. Is that the way you say it? Mr. Golliford, Bill Golliford will be one, I think Lori Anderson. And then the other gentleman I'm not quite familiar with, I'll ask Chris, Mr. Mayor Hoffman?
Pastor Gabe Goodman.
There you are. So, that was an honor. Thank you. I really enjoy being with the Jacksonville Beach community, even though I'm now in Atlantic Beach. It kind of pains my heart a little bit to say that out loud, but it's just the way it works. And the annual Sand Council, I was able to also be involved with that. It was a lot of fun. So, what I'm doing is speaking to you on behalf of Deck the Chairs. Just briefly, I wanted to update you on Deck the Bins. And thank you again, council, for your support in this effort. Deck the Chairs is now going to be celebrating 13 seasons. We've had a great relationship with the community, with the lifesaving Ocean Rescue folks, and really now, since really 2019, 2020, arts and arts education, student arts and arts education has been our thrust. That's our beneficiary. So, we are expanding, and Deck the Bins is one of the really big programs for us. It's our first time venturing into a new space. We launched the beginning of the month, and I mean, we're already into... What we're doing is we're going to wrap the trash bins, 24 of them, in Jacksonville Beach. We've been permitted to do that or approved, and these wood bins will be wrapped with banner, artwork, original art by young students between 8 to 18. The program is capturing already 90 art pieces from across Jacksonville, so we're really excited about that. And then we'll be responsible for installation, for maintenance. But what will happen is, the beach will have art on bins that for years no one paid attention to. Maybe no one even knew there was a trash bin there. And now these young artists, just like we were talking about with those Boy Scouts, you know, will have a chance to experience what it feels like to have their artwork in a public space be recognized and celebrated, and that will happen the end of May. Installation begins. So, I really just wanted to come in front of you. Thank you for what you're doing, and we're excited about that project, and certainly excited about Deck the Chairs this season. So, that was it. Thanks.
You had time to spare. Thank you, and thank you for your leadership on that project, as well as Deck the Chairs. Dennis Walrath?
I have copies that maybe if you wanted to distribute, if I can bring them up?
Certainly hand them to the clerk. Okay.
Reference those. My name's Dennis Walrath. I live at 405 Upper 36th Avenue South. That's called the Courtney South Beach neighborhood. The meeting on April 21st, two of the residents from our community, 53 homes, was here to talk about a parking situation on Fourth Street South. There's a couple of commercial businesses there, veterinarian, some office buildings, a funeral home. It's become a habit in the past couple of weeks that it's about 150-yard stretch of home. I'm sorry, 150-yard stretch of Fourth Street, which completes the circle for upper and lower 36th Avenue, and the cars have been parked there all day. So, we had a bit of an event in Courtney this weekend. It was a yard sale. You know, everybody's selling each other's junk to each other, and this topic came up. And I didn't really get a chance to come to the 21st meeting, so I don't know if anything's been done since then to investigate it or see what's going on there. But the veterinarian, we tried to approach, several of the residents have tried to approach the veterinary office, and all the employees have just kept saying, in a courteous way, most of them, that they've been told by management not to park in their parking lot, to leave their parking lot empty, so they park along the street. At 150 yards long, there's about eight cars that parked there. So, we're not talking about a lot of employees or a lot of customers, but it absolutely blocks the... There are five entrances and exits to Fourth Street from different streets around there. That's why I wanted to show you the map. That becomes very congested. And as you just talked about, the kickoff parade for the opening of the Jackson Beach, there'll be more and more residents, you know, walking their children, grandchildren. I have three grandchildren locally, five others that come up all the time. It's a hazard. It's a safety risk because you did come out and put up a sign, "No Parking Here" to the corner, because they were parking up on lawns and on corners. So, what we're asking is, I don't know if anyone had talked to the businesses after the 21st meeting or not, but our request is really that we take quick and immediate action to just avoid a catastrophic loss or injury. It would be a shame to have it on our heads if something bad happened there. There's other parking. I don't... I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm a mechanical engineer, so traffic is not my thing. But I know there's parking elsewhere, parking lots. It's just, it's not a livable situation. So, all the residents were very concerned about it. So, I said I would come to tonight's meeting, share my thoughts with you, ask that you take some quick and immediate action, talk to the businesses, tell them they have their own parking lots, to use their parking lots, ask them to cease and desist on that section, and we're also asking for no parking signs in that 150-yard section on Fourth Street. Jeff and Jeff are here, so I don't know that we need to go through any of that again, but I think you understand, if you look at the map, that it's a very confined space. It's not three cars wide, so when there's a car parked there, cars are constantly backing up. Delivery services, landscape contractors, it's just been a mess. So, asking for your attention to reach out to the contractors. Reach out to us, myself, if you want. I'll go talk to the businesses as well or help out where I can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Walrath. That is our last courtesy of this floor speaker card. Everyone else is attached to an agenda item, so we will move on to the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda carries. Now, the moment we've all been waiting for, the Citizen Information Academy graduation. Yay! I know. Yay! This is the fourth series of the Citizen Information Academy, and I just want to give a huge shout out to our city clerk's office, who organizes it all, handles the applications, the scheduling, working with all of the different departments. All of the department's key staff came out to talk to the participants in the academy, and I hope that you all had a really enjoyable, informative, engaging experience. I see some heads. Once we got through the three-second lag on the PowerPoint, you guys got us through that, so we appreciate your patience there. But anybody else who is looking to learn more about how a city operates, you don't have to go beyond that, but it's a great stepping stone if you then want to get involved on one of our citizen boards, if you want to run for office someday. But at the very, very least, you will be a more active, engaged, and involved citizen. So, appreciate you guys taking a lot of time out of your personal lives to come and engage with the city. So, we have a certificate suitable for framing, swag bag, all sorts of good stuff. So, I'm going to come around. I'll call your name. we have a a certificate suitable for framing, uh swag bag, all sorts of good stuff. So I'm gonna come around, I'll call your name, um, give you your certificate, and if we could just kind of line up at the front, we're gonna do a photo op at the end, and then you can go and get your swag bag from Jody Lynn. Did I get all that right? Is that the plan? Okay. And I can carry my microphone with me. This is fun. Alright. The the power now that I have. I guess I could have just picked it up from here. With so mu- oh, sorry, Monica's reading names. That makes it easier.
So first up, we have Amy Frank. Angie Gany. Again, that was Angie Gany. I believe Deborah Porter is not participating this evening. And Ms. Hannah Phillips is also absent this evening. Um, we have Mr. Jay Turner. Ms. Jennifer Ruotolo. Don't be shy. Ms. Jessica Johnston.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We have Joni Smith. Mr. Justin Henderson. Mr. Carl Johnson. Ms. Kathy Hall. Ms. Christie Ambrose. And she did not make it this evening, but we also have Ms. Lori Davidson. Mia Kuzumoto. Mr. Rod Jenkins. Mr. Ryan Donlin. And I think we skipped a name here, Mr. John Patrick.
We're gonna do a group picture. Is it possible to step up on the the back and have two rows? Yeah, that won't work unless they come down. Work scooching, get uncomfortable. It'll be fine. It's okay. It's good.
That's a good shot.
Think we are good. Thank you.
Think all the way through that. The rumor just went around, and not rumor, I think they're all meeting uh for Cinco de Mayo. I don't know what happened, but they decided to get a margarita instead of staying for the council meeting, and I respect that. I do. Thanks, you guys. Okay, we have not yet made it to city manager business. We have two other um ceremonial items. We have two proclamations. One of them, I apologize, m- my fault did not make it to the agenda, but we will go ahead and start with our proclamation for National Safe Boating Week. And I know we have um friends from the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary here to accept this proclamation and maybe say a few words, so I'll go ahead and start. Whereas for over one hundred million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity from coast to coast and everywhere in between, people are taking to the water and enjoying time together. Boating, sailing, paddling and fishing and whereas safe boating begins with preparation, the Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for most boating accidents and that life jackets could prevent nearly seventy-five percent of boating fatalities and whereas through basic boating safety procedures, carrying lifesaving emergency distress and communications equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe boating courses, participating in free boat safety checks, and staying sober while navigating, we can help ensure boaters on America's coastal inland and offshore waters stay safe through the season and whereas National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. And whereas, on average, six hundred and fifty people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., seventy-five percent of these fatalities caused by drowning and whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by boat, equipment or environmental factors and whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. Now therefore, I Christine Hoffman, Mayor of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim May seventeenth through twenty-third, twenty twenty-five as National Safe Boating Week and urge all those who boat to practice safe boating habits and to wear a life jacket at all times while boating. And our next uh proclamation is a little bit late, but it is never a bad time to conserve water. So uh April was Water Conservation Month, whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature and whereas the state of Florida Water Management Districts and the City of Jacksonville Beach are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation and whereas the City of Jacksonville Beach and the State of Florida has designated April typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources and whereas every business, industry, school and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water and whereas every business, industry, school and citizen can help by saving water and thus promote a healthy economy and community. And whereas efficient irrigation design, programming and maintenance can conserve water, the City of Jacksonville Beach will encourage citizens and businesses to evaluate their irrigation systems for po- potential efficiency enhancements and now therefore, be it resolved that by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Jacksonville Beach, I Christine Hoffman hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five as Water Conservation Month in the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, and call upon each citizen to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of this need to save water. For this, the twenty-seventh year of Water Conservation Month, there will be a special focus on irrigation system evaluations. And we have Doug Conkey with the St. Johns River Water Management. If you wanna come up and introduce yourself and say a word or two if you like.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow commissioners and uh Mike and staff. I wanna thank you. Uh, and as the mayor said, it's important to note that it's just not April, even though it may be just, it seem like it's a little late. Every month is Water Conservation Month, every day is Water Conservation Month, because you can exercise it not only in the local government and your businesses, but you're at your homes as well. It's the twenty-seventh year, so twenty-seven years ago, the state recognized we have a problem here and we need to really conserve water. We had explosive growth, which exists today still and with no sign of letup. And then in nineteen eighty-five, the onset of the modern irrigation system has just put our water use on a precipitous line on the forty-five, almost like the Blue Angel takeoff. Uh, because now people can water their yards corner to corner almost every day with no mindset or recognition of the watering restrictions we have in place for water conservation. In fact, a recent survey showed that forty percent of citizens have never heard of the water restrictions and thought they were voluntary. And that's a problem. Second, water conservation is the least expensive, actually costs you almost nothing, and it saves the homeowner a lot of money. Because in today's home, we find fifty percent of the water being used is outside the house. So irrigation obviously is that low-hanging fruit that we can really go after, but there's everything you do inside the house. Even when I had an eighty-year-old mayor down in Penny Farm say, turn the water off when you ca- uh uh brushing your teeth. And bless her heart, she is correct. Uh, but let's just say that the in no- the Northwater Regional Water Supply Plan is our comp plan, which oversees the aquifer water which you rely on. It defines the consumptive use permits that you rely on to get with utilities. It has a conservation element, which is very important. If you are watching what your neighbors are going through to get that water now, because the water supply plan, I call it the tip of the iceberg, in twenty seventeen identified, we got problems. Now, in twenty twenty-three, when it was updated, those problems still exist and they're getting bigger. Let's recognize that with uh since twenty fifteen to twenty forty-five, a twenty-year timeframe, our population's growing by forty-nine percent just in northeast Florida. And water use is going up by thirty-two percent. So by twenty forty-five, anticipate seven hundred million gallons a day of water is getting pulled out of the aquifer. With efficient conservation, we can get to about eighty MGD. So where water is gonna get more expensive are those other projects we need to get that water use more even. You'll hear about alternative water supply, most commonly stormwater harvesting or reclaimed water. You're familiar with reclaimed water because you use an awful lot of it on your golf course. Reclaimed water, though, is is becoming a problem, especially at this time of year. As you see, it's hot and dry. Two of your sister uh jurisdictions to the south, JEA, uh dealing with problems to the south, and St. Johns County are enacting water restrictions on reclaimed water. Because when they reach operational use, they're turning valves off. And that is a shock to some people down there, but they're not paying attention and those nice neighborhoods, they see brown and they're watering uh their yards. So here's the tip of the iceberg when utilities start voluntarily creating restrictions. Then we have things like recharge. You're familiar with the Black Creek Water Project. That was a hundred and twenty million dollars, will be fully online this summer, taking ten, up to ten million gallons a day from Black Creek, seventeen miles south to Keystone to recharge Lake Brooklyn, which is a high recharge area for the aquifer. The easiest point to put water into that three-state bathtub down there. So that's nice, but that's just a a small part of this. The next project in the queue that you're gonna start hearing more about is in a s- scale of cost and complexity by a factor of ten over that, is gonna be right here in your backyard. JEA will be taking forty MGD, forty million gallons a day, and we're gonna be shipping it out to Lake City, to the recharge areas out there, because those uh restrictions out there that are caused by what we call MFLs, it's basically the low fuel light for your car, the aquifer saying, we've got a problem and that's why we gotta recharge it. Forty MGD and you can, you can guess, that's a, what, forty miles? We gotta get it there. A lot of lane has to be used to cleanse it a little bit, pick it up, take it further out there. And that's probably gonna be at a billion and a half dollars when it comes online in twenty thirty-nine. So if we keep lining up these big projects, the cost of water is about to go up. You probably have tier pricing to kind of motivate people. When you go into tier three and four, it gets real expensive. So I'm just saying, we have to do things that are inexpensive and easy to do without, we're doing our part. And it's kind of like a a New Year's resolution. Three things you need to be successful. You need to have a plan, disciplined implementation, and achievable metrics. If we want meaningful sustainability. So I just wanna say thank you for what you do, what your staff does, and what your citizens are doing to help preserve our precious water if we expect to have an enhanced future for our water. Because things are are happening fast. So thank you again for all you do. Thanks.
Alright, let's start this meeting. Moving on to item A, Mr. Barron.
Mayor and Council, this evening, Dennis Barron, Public Works Director. This evening, the first item I have for you is approving the purchase of a replacement downtown city compactor. It's located just a block north of here and right behind uh this, I think it's the Seahorse Motel, Seawalk Motel. There we go. Um, it's in the public parking lot directly back there. Um, this item was put in play about thirty years ago. Um, we have not replaced it since then. It's becoming problematic and the problematic uh parts are becoming uh bigger and harder to get, so it's warranted, uh this, it's in need of replacement. And that's what the first item is for you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. And a motion?
I move we approve the purchase of a replacement downtown city compactor from Tampa Crane and Body through Marathon Equipment Company, a source well provider for an amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-one.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from council? Mr. Horn.
Just wanna ask, um, this is for the use of multiple businesses in that area provided by the city. Do any of the businesses contribute to this?
So the, several years ago, several, probably thirty, when the compactor was installed, uh, the decision was made for the downtown area to be able to reduce the number of dumpsters and dumpster enclosures in the area to set up a, an area that would, all the businesses in that area would then share the downtown compactor. This building itself is also one that shares the downtown uh compactor through um through the paper waste and anything we generate here also goes through the compactor. So it's it's provided by the city, but it's done so systematically to encourage which businesses have to be a part of it, as in they're they're exempt from the requirements to have their own dumpster enclosures and or their own dumpsters located on facility. But in turn, we put them all back there together in in the one common compactor.
Okay. I mean, I'm all for the compactor. I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Item B.
Okay, second item I have for you this evening is the approval of a uh new wet well tank uh and pipe cleaning and TV inspection services contract with a primary to Wind River Environmental and a secondary to Shenandoah, Shenandoah General Construction LLC. Uh, this is a three-year contract request. It's part of an ongoing contract uh for the city. It also has three one-year additional uh renewals at the end of the three-year. Second part and third part, of course, is to delegate the uh negotiation to the mayor and city manager as well as the third part is to approve subsequent contract renewals with the city manager uh for the remainder of the term. This is something we have done. Um, and the same two contractors have been on lead and secondary for the previous term, which I think finished, just finishing a five-year contract. And I believe it was the same group before then, so this is a ru- routine for Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Barron, and a motion on number one?
I move we award bid number 2425-04 for the wet well tank and pipe cleaning and TV inspection services to Wind River Environmental, DBA Metro Ruder as primary vendor, and Shenandoah General Construction LLC as secondary vendor.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, Ms. Golding.
Just a quick question, because I noticed that the prices that we were quoted by Wind River were significantly lower in most cases than the other bidders. So, you know, in the back of my mind, I always worry that you get what you pay for, and I, but I know that we've been working with them for the past 10 years, so just wanted to confirm we're happy with the services that we're getting from them.
We are, their recommendations, we've been following them pretty strictly as far as, you know, that part of that, this is part of the group that actually found the location down at Republic that we had to replace a few months back prior to the start of the American Drive project. That was part of routine pipe cleaning within the area that identified that clogged main that we needed to be able to address. So they are doing exactly what they're supposed to do, we are happy with what they're doing. The only reason we keep a secondary is because it's such time critical. If, for instance, Wind River cannot be Johnny on the spot, we have a secondary that we can enable to be able to get them out here, because a lot of times this work can become time critical. We do schedule a lot of work with them, but sometimes emergencies become very time critical.
Don't get me wrong, I like to see, you know, lower prices, so I'm glad that we're happy with their services.
Any other questions or comments from council? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, number two?
I move we authorize the mayor and city manager to negotiate and execute any contract as a result of this bid award.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Number three?
I move we delegate authority to the city manager to approve and execute all subsequent contract renewals through the maximum contract term.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from council? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Sutton?
No.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
No.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Barron. Resolutions? Mr. Putnam?
Alan Putnam, Director of Beats of Energy. Last week, I brought these before you, before the briefing. The first one is authorizing an addendum to the gas services agreement with Florida Gas Utility. This addendum allows us to do a prepaid deal for, with a minimum discount of 60 cents per term buying natural gas supply for our customers. The opportunity presents itself only because the difference between municipal borrowing rates and private equity is large right now. And as you can see, at the end of five years, this would re, we would reprice this. If we don't reach a minimum discount price of 23 cents, then we can either just say we're done with it, or we can accept it as is, but that's the offer from, through, I can't mention the firm right now, it's one of the large equity firms in the nation. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, and can I have a motion on Resolution X?
I move we adopt Resolution number 2124-2025, authorize an addendum to the gas services agreement permitting Florida Gas Utility to act on the city's behalf, entertaining in entertaining into a prepaid natural gas transaction with the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia.
I'd like to correct the resolution number as 2194-2025. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and as Mr. Putnam mentioned, we had a very extensive briefing on this last week. Pretty complicated, but very interesting opportunity for us. So council members, if you have any additional questions, Mr. Wouters.
Mr. Putnam, as I recall in our discussion, this was a part of the offer that it said was a 30-year commitment. You're certain of that? Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Alan, can you turn the podium mic back on, please? Any other questions or comments from council? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Resolution B?
I move we adopt Resolution number 2195-2025, authorizing the execution of a directive to execute financial hedges with the Florida Gas Utility.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Do you have any additional comments?
Just a comment that the reason why this came about was, a few years ago, gas prices were very volatile, and I would get calls monthly from hospitals saying, hey, can you give me any idea where prices, you know, they're swinging wildly, and I had, really, there's nothing I could really do, because we just, we buy what the market, you know, price is. This allows us an opportunity to kind of levelize that cost over time by buying incremental natural gas supply at locked-in prices that meet our budget. So it gives our customers budget certainty instead of having to ride the market. That's all the comments I have.
Thank you, Mr. Putnam, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Questions from council? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to ordinances, I'll go ahead and get the public hearing started, Ms. Ireland. Madam Clerk, will you read the ordinance by title, please?
An ordinance of the city of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, adopting amendments to the Jacksonville Beach 2050 Comprehensive Plan for the purpose of adopting the updated 10-year Water Supply Facilities Work Plan in order to comply with Chapter 163.3177, Section 6C3 Florida statutes, amending the potable water sub-element of the comprehensive plan, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, Scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Thank you. This ordinance for the amendment to the text of the 2050 Comprehensive Plan is before the council for a public hearing and adoption on its first reading. Under the laws of the state of Florida, an ordinance which changes the text of any element of the city's 2050 Comprehensive Plan is a quasi-legislative proceeding. Quasi-legislative proceeding means that a governing body is acting in its rulemaking capacity. It is the duty of the council to arrive at sound decisions regarding proposed changes to the text of the adopted 2050 Comprehensive Plan. This includes receiving citizen input regarding any proposed text change. The application has been reviewed by staff and the Planning Commission for consistency with other portions of the comprehensive plan. The council may hear from all interested parties in the legislative determination of an amendment to the text of the city's 2050 Comprehensive Plan. I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number 2025-8221. We'll have staff presentation first.
Thank you, Mayor Hoffman. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Heather Ireland, Planning and Development Department. I'm glad Mr. Conkey was here to talk about the regional water supply plan, so that was kind of a surprise. So by statute, we are required to adopt this document, and I know it's not very long, by reference into our comprehensive plan. Strategy PW117 references this document, and it is adopted by reference. So the only change to the actual comp plan is the date of this document, and essentially it mirrors what the regional water supply plan does, except ours is like nine pages long, and that one is about 500 pages long, if you want to have some nighttime reading for that. And what it requires us to do is identify our water supply infrastructure, conservation efforts, and any capital improvement projects that we have in the works for improvement to our water supply. So I know it sounds like a Public Works thing, and we did coordinate with them to get all the data, but since it's an update to our comp plan, we kind of do this through the planning department, so I'm happy to entertain any questions anyone has.
Thank you, Ms. Ireland. So you're saying it was lucky that we were late on the water conservation?
Absolutely, perfect coincidence.
We knew that, didn't we?
Yeah, we know.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ireland. Do we have any comments from the public? Anyone would like to speak in favor or in opposition? We will close the public hearing before requesting a motion on this ordinance, beginning with myself. Each of the members has requested indicate for the record both the names of persons and the substance of any ex parte communications regarding this application. Thank you, do I not have to do this part?
No, this is legislative, not quasi-judicial, so no ex parte communications are required.
Forget everything I just said. And a motion, please.
I move we approve the ordinance number 2025-8221 on the first reading to transmit the updated 10-year water supply facilities work plan for expedited state review, and schedule a second reading for adoption on June 16, 2025.
Second. That sounds great. We have a motion and a second. Before opening the floor for discussion or questions by the council, please be reminded that our decision will be based on the criteria set forth in the Florida statutes. Staff's report, the recommendation of Planning Commission, and the public input at all hearings. We'll now open the floor for discussion by council. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, roll call. It's okay. Wait, Mr. Horn, please, address the council.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's my pleasure.
No, I just, I actually have a question. Looking at page seven here, I, this is just from my own application, the system components, and then we talk about the water pumping and treatment, and we've got water treatment plant number one, well number 11 is out of service, but it's still listed as rated capacity and actual capacity. Was that prior to being taken out of service, or is it still being? I just, I was trying to figure that out, because I would assume that would just be a line through.
I believe so, again, like I said, we got this updated data from Public Works, so we didn't question any of it, if you will. They told us what they needed to have changed.
And maybe our city manager with his engineering background could tell me, we've got rated capacity and actual capacity. So my understanding is like rated and then actual, is there a limit? Is there a percentage overrated that you can safely utilize these? Because several of them, well number 22 is rated at 1,600, but its actual capacity is 1,726, same thing for well 23. Are we overusing these? Are we, I mean, I'm just wondering.
No, just to clarify for council, the consumptive use permit, I'm presuming you're referencing page seven?
Correct.
Yeah, so we've got our consumptive use permit is what we're actually allowed to withdraw from the well site, regardless of the technology that's there. So we actually have capacity to pull more water than we actually use on a daily basis, and we want to make sure that we keep our permit for that value and not let it diminish, otherwise that would cap us on what we can do for future rail.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to ordinance B, I will, we'll call you up for updates in a second. Madam Clerk, will you read the ordinance by title, please?
An ordinance of the city of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 31 Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article 3, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 31-36 Maximum Parking Time, to add a provision for parking on State Road A1A, providing for legislative findings, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, Scrivener's errors, codification, and an effective date.
Thank you. This ordinance is before the council for a public hearing and consideration on its second reading. I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number 2025-8222. Do we have any updates, Chief, since last time?
Jean Paul Smith, Chief of Police. Of course, y'all know this is our second reading for this ordinance. It was amended at the last meeting, the 34th Avenue, the restricted parking from 34th Avenue to County Line on the west side of the road. Other than that, I don't have any other comments, the ordinance still is as printed. It should be in front of you now. Questions?
We'll get to questions once we have a motion on the floor. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, based on the conversations with council, over a week ago, we did send to the FDOT the revised or amended language that you put into the ordinance, and we asked them if they had any concerns with the amendment as it was posed. I received email confirmation from our representative at DOT this morning that they have no concerns with the modified motion as was done at the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Stephanopoulos. We have two speaker cards. Terry Deloach, if you want to kick us off?
Terry Deloach, 405 32nd Avenue South, Jacksonville Beach. Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, I just have one comment that I support, basically, I support Councilman Sandy Goldman's amended ordinance. What I do know is that the original ordinance, the original ordinance would definitely have an adverse effect on the cars being removed from Third Street with a four-hour limit up and down. It would push them into the neighborhood. I do know that, that will happen. So I know the other ordinance, the amended ordinance, is not perfect, I know it's organic, but I do, but I do support the amended ordinance, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Deloach. Janelle Wilson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Janelle Wilson, 2014 South Oceanfront. Mr. Deloach and I have a little bit of disagreement on this issue. I support the ordinance, but in its original version, which goes from 25th Avenue South and Osceola down to the county line. Even though Mr. Deloach mentioned that he would cause the parking for the employees of the First Coast Dermatology to park elsewhere, it would also push all the semis back up into our area. So this whole, this weekend, semis were parked all up and down right in that area. Every parking spot that they could get was parked there. So that's going to push them further north and cause more problems for us in that area. So I urge you to think about going back to the original version from 25th and Osceola South. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. That is all the speaker cards we had. Would anyone else from the audience like to address council before we take a motion? And can I have a motion, please?
I move we adopt ordinance number 2025-8222 on the second reading restricting parking on State Road A1A South.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Horn?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask, I guess, city manager, attorney, and maybe the chief, if he knows this answer, I want to play devil's advocate here. We passed this tonight, we say yes, and then three months from now, we have all of the semi-traffic that has moved, or other vehicle traffic that's moved to other areas. What, I guess, I guess I have two questions. Number one, what is our recourse? Can we, because we've amended this, we chose 25th Avenue South, and that was, I think, part of the discussion with the DOT. If we, what is our recourse down the road? If we suddenly realize, oh, wait, this is not working out the way we thought it was going to be, it's actually more problematic, we got citizens coming in here, you know, pitchforks and torches, hey, this is a whole problem, now we've made it worse. So I guess that's my first question is, number one, do we have any recourse? And then number two is, I guess kind of following along with that is, I haven't, I'm wondering, does, where would the DOT, and if, is it in discussions, or maybe this is a private discussion, their thoughts about how much further up? Because we've had other citizens who've said, hey, okay, why are you stopping at 25th? Why aren't we going to 16th? Why aren't we going to 10th? Why don't we go to Beach Boulevard? Why don't we ban them all from, you know, city of Jacksonville Beach? So I guess there's kind of two issues there, and I'm just wondering if that can be, I guess the first one is my real issue is like, what would happen if this becomes an issue?
Allow me to answer question one, because I think that's more legal based, and then I'll defer to Mr. Stephanopoulos on question two. We can always repeal an ordinance if we feel, or further amend it, with the only little nuance here is because it's on a state road, to seek authority, we need state buy-in because of the way the state statute is worded. That doesn't mean we can't repeal it, but if we wanted to change it or move it, we would just need, you know, the state DOT to be on board, but we're not stuck in any situation, for lack of a better term, if we enact this and we find it winds up being detrimental, we could always bring forward an ordinance to repeal it. Repeal, I think we have the ultimate authority. If we want to change boundaries, we Repeal, I think we have the ultimate authority. If we want to change boundaries, we, we need, you know, to have the state's cooperation.
And, and part of that question was for those folks in the audience that kind of have thoughts, you know, there's people have different opinions of how this is going to work and depending on which direction we go tonight. And I've, you know, we've all had probably, I'm assuming everybody else had emails as well, both directions. Uh, we've all had communications from citizens, so that was that question. I don't know about the other one.
Yeah, uh, I think an answer to the second part is that in our conversations with FDOT, they have never indicated this is a one bite at the apple and you're done. And so, uh, I think that if we wanted to expand the boundaries of four-hour maximum parking, they would entertain that. Uh, they were pretty clear that what we cannot do is ban semi-truck parking, and we cannot restrict overnight parking. Those are the two things that we cannot do. Uh, we, again, the chief and I, uh, put together a laundry list of questions where they said either yes, no, or with following caveats. This is what we thought was the best way to move forward at this time. But if council wanted to come back and say, we want to expand the four-hour parking limitation, I think DOT would be amenable to that.
And I just wanted to add there too, and just to put a finer point on that, we are not allowed to ban semi-truck parking on A-one-A. That is something that is not an option to us. But from the beginning of us trying to get an answer from FDOT of just a couple of years of unanswered emails to having a sit-down meeting discussing this among several other issues, um, and concerns and just establishing a, a more productive communication, I think has been very positive, um, for us. I don't want to speak on the others that were in the meeting, but to see the responsiveness that is now happening, um, is reassuring to me. Um, I don't know that this is going to be the, the perfect panacea, but I do feel that we have at least a dialogue and acknowledgement of our community's concern, um, that they are interested in helping us solve the problem within, within the range that we're allowed to. So I, I feel pretty confident with that. Ms. Golding, are you, I'm sorry, Mr. Horn, were you finished? Okay, go ahead.
Just going to say, I, I agree, and I guess more than anything, I'm glad that this came out, because anybody who's going to watch this later on, they can see the thought process. They have the understanding now as to where we have other options down the road and for the folks in the room, because some folks will be happy with whichever way we approved this tonight, and some folks won't, but we still have options. And that's the, that's the thing I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Ms. Golding?
Thank you. Um, so there's a couple of things I want to touch on tonight. So this weekend, I went down, I'm on the north end of the beach, so I don't go to the south end that much. I hate to say that, but, you know, I live in my little bubble up there. But I did go down there, uh, Saturday and Sunday, and like Ms. Wilson said, there were semi-trucks, four semi-trucks parked from Twenty-Fifth Avenue South down to Thirty-fourth. Frustratingly to me, one of the trucks was in front of, we have three homes that front A-one-A right below Twenty-Fifth Avenue South. And, um, then one of them was in front of Palm's Presbyterian, and my understanding is that, that a church member spoke to me, and the church is just not happy when they have those semis parking there. And then the other one was parked in front of Quinn Shaw's. So, you know, blocking visibility to their sign, and if people are trying to get to a funeral, and, you know, you know, I'm thinking about all of the, the, the issues, right? But the biggest one that bothered me the most was those houses on Third Street, that front Third Street, because that's the whole thing that got this started to begin with. It's on the east side of Third Street, we have all these residences, and these semis are parking right next to these residences, and it's not, it doesn't feel safe for our, our residences, and it's, um, just not a good situation. So I went and knocked on the doors of those three residences and was able to talk to two of them. The third, I wasn't able to, to reach, but, um, the northernmost home was not being impacted by the semi, because it was parked further, it was parked further south. So she said she really didn't have an issue with it, but the home in the middle said, yeah, they do have an issue with it. And, um, so, you know, I feel like that's going to continue to be an issue, and so it's something I, I really would like for us to consider. The other thing I wanted to touch on is, um, to Mr. Deloach's point. The, I found out from the chief that the dermatologist has five doctors, and that's the office that's right there south of Thirty-second. And they have twenty-two employees, and they only allow five employees to park in the parking lot. So that's seventeen employees that have to find someplace to park. And ultimately, as we've seen, they're parking on Thirty-second and possibly on Thirty-third. So I still have concerns about opening it up to four-hour limit from Twenty-Fifth all the way down to the Saint Johns County line, because, because the employees can't park in those spots. And I think that's just going to push the employees onto the, the residential streets. However, I, I would like for us to consider perhaps amending this ordinance again to require the four-hour parking from Twenty-Fifth to Thirty-second. There's not really any other place you could delimit it, you know, because there's, there's not a road between Twenty-Fifth and, other than Saint Augustine Boulevard, that's where those houses are. But that would basically require four-hour parking in front of those three houses just south of Saint Augustine Boulevard. And it doesn't, and I looked, and there, there is one other place where people can park, and it's in front of Janelle Wilson's business. And I think it's maybe one or two cars can park there, but a semi couldn't park there. So my thinking is that this would help to address the semis parking in front of those residences on the west side of Third Street. So if there's not any other discussion, I would, I'd like to make a motion that we would amend the ordinance to say, on the west side, we would require four-hour parking from Twenty-Fifth Avenue South to Thirty-second Avenue South, in addition to the Thirty-fourth Avenue South to the Saint Johns County line.
We have a motion to amend. Is there a second? Wait. Either there's a second or there's not. The amendment has no second?
I will second it.
Mr. Wouter's second? Discussion on the proposed amendment? Mr. Horn was?
Does that, I, does that effectively put us back to where we were initially?
No, because that's carving out, that's carving out Thirty-second to Thirty-fourth, which is where, um, the, the bank and Dr. Moon's and the Surgery Center. So those areas, the Surgery Center, so I spoke to somebody who works at the Surgery Center, and the Surgery Center has a lot of parking, but apparently the Surgery Center is really busy, and their parking lot stays full a lot. So it would seem that those parking spaces along A-one-A, there at the Surgery Center would be beneficial to their employees and their patients as well. So if we allow those businesses, we don't have the four-hour limit in front of those businesses, then the employees can continue to park on A-one-A or the patients.
I, okay, so, um, and I do know the Surgery Center quite well. My wife works there, has for the last fifteen years. I go up there and visit. When I think about the concept of the four-hour parking limit, we have the option of limiting parking to four hours by ordinance. Trying to choose my words carefully. Similar to how we limit people's ability to park in a handicap parking space. But if I ran over to the, or if anybody in this room pulled up at the gas station right now, parked in a handicap spot, ran inside, it would be breaking the law, but you got your soda and left. Probably would not get a ticket, correct? Possibly. Um, I worry about leaving that open. I just, I don't know, I worry, if we're going to put this in effect, I would like to see it, just one area and go down and be done with it, but that's just my thoughts. I don't want to go too far into that, I guess. I was kind of going on a trail that would take too long to explain, so I apologize.
Mr. Jansen?
Yeah, two things. One, I'd, I'd almost like to see an aerial map of it. I'm trying to imagine it in my head, just to see where the medians are and whether or not, because it's hard, I, I mean, I know the area, but I know that sometimes we have those end caps that have those raised medians at the end. I'd like to see where those, where those are situated, number one. Number two, um, if we amend this, are we back to conversing with DOT, FDOT again, before we can move forth, further?
You could adopt it, and DOT could say that they're fine with it post. But that's really an option for council.
Either way, it would have to be brought back in front of FDOT, correct?
If you finalize an ordinance tonight, that, or, a copy of that ordinance would be sent to the Department of Transportation. And at that point, we would hopefully receive the authorization to move forward with the placement of informational signs for patrons.
Thank you.
Mr. Wouters?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chief, if I might ask you, you've been around a long time, and you've seen councils come and go. I'm getting the gut feeling from listening to citizens' concerns and living in this area and seeing it every day. Say we pick Twenty-Fifth South to the, to the county line, or to, to the end of our jurisdiction, are we just moving the property, the problem north to Beach and Twenty-Fifth then? Oh, you're asking my opinion, I assume, on all this. I, I have seen this before, and, um, it's possible it moves north. And then we're going to have to move north and do the same issues north, and when we start carving out north of there, because we've carved out areas already, my original choice was Twenty-Fifth to the county line on both sides. That makes it clean, and there's no exceptions. It may, may push it north. It, it may push parking that the employees have on the Thirty-second, Thirty-third, Thirty-fourth. That's also very possible. You know, we've talked, and, uh, I, I linked to this, I've experienced a satellite photo for two weeks now, and I've also driven down there numerous times along with CSO, and I've talked to the businesses, I've talked to some of the residents. Unfortunately, we have a commercial, a very popular commercial area that's high traffic with a lot of high-end businesses, Surgery Centers, dermatologists, realtors, uh, the, the funeral home, the, the veterinarian. Directly to the west of that, we have a high-density residential neighborhood, probably higher end, that's all sits off of Main State Road, which is six blocks from the beach. There is no way, in my experience, that we are going to be able to pass an ordinance or legislation that will not affect somebody else, the law of unintended consequences. What those consequences are, I've told some of y'all in private conversations that the semi, the spending, the semi issue looked like an easy pass, but this is going to have unexpected consequences. Whether you say it's squeezing the balloon, whether you say it's Newton's Third Law motion, every effect has an opposite re, uh, effect on something else. Or whatever you want to call it, it's going to affect, and usually it's, it's unanticipated what the effects are, so we can predict. But there's going to be people affected, uh, businesses affected, and, uh, issues that we don't anticipate yet. It's almost guaranteed, because we only have so much space and so much parking. Um, this may affect the residential parking on, um, Thirty, all the way from Saint Augustine to Jack's. It may affect Isabella. Um, it may affect Thirty-sixth Avenue South, upper and lower. I just don't know what the, the ramifications are, but it's going to be something, no matter what you decide on the dais. And no matter how you try to carve out things, it will have effect on businesses and residents. And, um, um, I'm also getting inquiries about no parking and residential parking passes, and just a lot of side issues. You, you know, as a council, you're doing your best to make a decision for the greater good. Y'all didn't, and I didn't create a lot of this issues, and y'all didn't, and y'all have asked great questions, you've had great suggestions. I, I think you're doing your due diligence, and my hat's off to you, because I just want you to know that there are going to be side effects of anything we do, and I can't predict what they're going to be. Also, I've done my best, and so has Mike, to make recommendations to you. I don't know how to solve this problem. I've been staring at it for two weeks. If I did, I'd probably be on the lecture circuit for a hundred thousand dollars a day if I could solve this problem. So does that answer your question? It's a long-winded response. I don't know what it's going to be, but it will be something, and it could be pushing it north.
I don't think, I understand exactly what you're saying, and you can't predict how it's all going to work out. But I'm having just two feelings. I don't know if any of my honorable colleagues are having them too. I'm having, because I live in that area, and I drive it every day, and I've been seeing a lot of semis parking down between Eleventh Avenue South down to Twentieth, to the gate station. And I didn't used to see them there, so I don't know if we're already seeing consequences or not, or if there's just more, just a coincidence or what. And I don't know if we're just pushing stuff into the neighborhoods and making their lives, you know, worse. So I'm hoping we can consider carefully what we're doing. And I'm honestly just suggesting perhaps the best thing to do is to move it even further south and see what happens. And we can always come back and undo it. Thank you.
Chief, I think you're overestimating the daily rate for lectures on, uh, park, on street parking, but just in case that was a retirement path, maybe, maybe. Um, I just want to, um, jump in real quick. Again, I don't think there's going to be a perfect solution here. I do think that we should move forward. Something, I'm, whether it's right or wrong, and we'll see the results, I think, pretty quickly, but I do think that proximity to Butler Boulevard is very attractive to the long-haul truck drivers. I think that's why you don't already see them parking further down, and, and people are like, they're not in Neptun Beach. Well, they're not in Neptun Beach because it's far away from Butler. So I think proximity and timeliness of being able to get back on the highway, um, is what is attractive, one of the main things that's attractive about this area. I also think this, there's some curves in the road. It is not a straight shot on A-one-A at that point in our community. It's also a place where speed really starts to pick up, as people are, especially in the mornings and the evenings, they're, they're going down, getting ready to get on Butler to head west. So that's why I think even if we do push the problem around a little bit, I think that this is one where it is really hard to take a right or a left turn onto Third Street anyway, and then you put, uh, a big barrier to visibility in front of you. So, um, I definitely don't think there's a perfect solution. I think that's the first thing you learn in the city government. Citizens say, just do this, it's so simple, and you realize there's twenty-seven reasons why it's not that simple, and I think this is a great example of that. And so we're still on the, uh, amendment offered by Ms. Golding, so I'll go back to Ms. Golding for a revisit.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, to follow up with Mike. So FDOT didn't put any, uh, boundaries or anything on what we did. They just said restrict it, restrict the time ugly, right? So if we wanted to say these areas and these areas, that, I mean, do you have any reason to believe that, that they? Otherwise, would, would they not have said, you know, we want you to do it a certain way?
Yeah, they, they did not, uh, they did not tell us you can only work south of Beach Boulevard. They did not tell us it has to all be contiguous. They did not tell us that we can't come back a second time within three or six months to ask for an expansion or extension. What they told us was, you can't ban semi-trucks, and you can't ban overnight parking. And there was a laundry list of some other things that we'd asked them as well. But those were the two big caveats. Cannot ban semis, and you cannot ban overnight parking.
So I, I mean, I realize that there may be some hesitancy that, okay, if we're, if we're doing this in one area and another area and leaving that, that Thirty-second to Thirty-fourth, you know, without any time limits, you know, is that a little disjointed? But, you know, personally, I, I would just, I would like to say that, again, going down there this weekend and, and seeing what was going on all throughout the weekend, you, you know, that semi-truck was there in front of those homes the whole time, Saturday and Sunday. And, you know, we don't have any restrictions right now. You can guarantee that if we do, when those restrictions do go in, the semi-trucks will continue to be parking in front of those homes. And, you know, for me, the biggest issue is how the semi-trucks are The biggest issue is how the semi trucks are impacting our homes that are right there along A one A. And so that's why I really feel that we need to try this, this is gonna be our first bite at the apple. We try this, at least we're doing something to try, and, and I know that you guys didn't look at the map and I wish we could pull the map up here. But I can tell you that, you know, from Twenty Fifth to Old, to Saint Augustine Boulevard, there's the gate gas station. And there's really not any parking there, from Saint Augustine to Thirty Second. There are a few businesses, but there's those houses. And then there's, it, there's that long stretch of parking right there in front of those houses, and then there's not really any other. Parking that a semi could fit in, so the semis are just taking advantage of that and parking right there in front of those homes. So, I, I would just like to urge my fellow council members to consider doing this. At least for the sake of those residences that are there, because that's the whole thing that got us started going in this direction to begin with. To try to address the issues that, that are impacting the people who are living there every day. Um, and uh, so that's why I think we really should support this modification.
Thank you, Ms. Golding, Mister Sutton.
Um, I do have the map pulled up and I completely agree um, with the recommendation on the amendment. Um, and it did start because of houses on the east side, so uh, this is just a very small, it's really. Two and a half of the houses there, um, just south of Saint Augustine, yep. Um, so I don't see any reason, and then back to the F D O T thing, I don't, I think. It's reasonable to assume that they would be supportive, they've supported what we've recommended thus far. And if any future. Adjustments that we make further north are needed, it, as long as they're similar in nature, I'd see no reason why they wouldn't approve those as well. That, that's just my opinion, but uh, I don't see where they would have any basis to not approve them. Um, you know, uh. In the big picture here, we've, we're talking, we've talked about a number of things, we've got the vet's office and this, the whole Fourth Street thing. Um, you know, unfortunately, if we were to approve something, you know, what's asked for right here, the. The cars from down there and tho- those um, businesses could end up on Thirty Sixth, Upper and Lower, so we've gotta be very careful, right? What we do, because we don't want to um, exacerbate the problem and, and what we're doing here could exacerbate some problems. But I think all of us recognize, we've talked about this already, that there's some additional things that are gonna need to be done. Particularly in this area west of A one A. Um, and the dermatology office, as, as Ms. Wilson has outlined, and the possibility of. Uh, an influx of some of those businesses, depending on what occurs there, or what we recommend or try and get them to do, then all of a sudden. If you don't cover everything, then you've got cars parking in front of homes on Thirty Second or whatever the case may be, so we've gotta. Try and think ahead, right, to not, not cause another problem as much as possible, but. Um, I agree with the amendment, I think this is a first step and um, like the mayor said, we'll see where um. Sort of where it trickles out and where the pro- there, there, there're probably gonna be some additional problems and we'll have to address those.
Thank you, Mister Sutton, I don't have any other lights on the board, so we will vote Mister Wouters.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to say quickly that I hope we'll be as responsive to other residents' needs as we are trying to be for these folks. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, uh, we'll vote on the amendment as offered by Ms. Golding. Clerk roll call.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries, back to the original motion as amended, are there any additional comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Final item of the night, sorry guys, it's been a busy day, as you can tell, thank you for your patience. We will move on to our final ordinance. Madam Clerk, will you read the ordinance by title, please?
An ordinance of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, amending chapter six, beaches and bulkheads. Article three, use of Atlantic Ocean Beach, section six dash four five, prohibited activities and items on Atlantic Ocean Beach. To provide a prohibition against smoking on the beach and amending section six dash fifty seven. Enforcement, citation form, hearing penalties, to make necessary corrections and clarifications. Providing for legislative findings, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, scrivener's errors. Codification and an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, this ordinance is before this council for a public hearing and consideration on its second reading. I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number twenty twenty five dash eighty two twenty three. Any updates, Chief?
I'm still reeling from that. This is, of course, the second reading for the um, banning for smoking on the beach, it's the same as written on, on the first or no amendments. To the first um, to the first vote approval, so it's presented as is in front of you and no changes.
Thank you, Chief. Um, we do have quite a few speaker cards and I do just want, in case you missed it, we did um, have a first reading on this item. A couple of weeks ago and it passed unanimously, so uh, if you don't feel like you have to use your whole three minutes, you are welcome. To not use the whole three minutes, but everyone who has presented a speaker card and would like to speak will be offered the opportunity. But feel free to wave, give a thumbs up, um, or, or come to the podium. Your name, so we'll start with Ashley Mazzano, come on up, give us your name and address and you will have three minutes. Up to three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, um, my name is Ashley Mazzano and I live at uh, ten forty three nine Skycrest Drive North, Jacksonville, Florida. And it is an honor to speak with each and every one of you this evening. I'm here on behalf of Tobacco Free Jacksonville as a member of the organization. But also as a Jacksonville resident and former teacher for Duval County Public Schools. Over the five years, I taught science in middle and high school across the county. I witnessed how vaping negatively impacted my students' well-being and how normalized it was in recreational areas where they frequented. I would like to address the hazards that smoking and vaping products have on the well-being of young adults, what you see in their environment matters. Tobacco-free policies shift norms and reduce the likelihood of youth starting to use tobacco or vapes. When I taught, students would regularly attempt to vape in school bathrooms or hallways. Um, because they believed it was a safer alternative sig- to cigarettes which did not harm their peers. But everyone in that bathroom where vaping occurred was exposed to heavy metals like lead, tin and nickel. As well as chemicals such as formaldehyde and other identified chemicals. The harms of secondhand smoke for cigarettes and vaping products are largely unrecognized by the public. The normalization of vaping and tobacco products in public settings such as Jacksonville Beach. Contributes to the rates of disease and death I am witnessing in the community. Increased risk, like increased health risks associated with vaping and tobacco products are not only relevant for Duval County Public School students. But young families who visit the beaches with their children as tourists. As many of you know, Florida's economy relies on tourism. And visitors cite clean, natural areas that are free of litter as a top reason for choosing their destination. Just last month, during a litter cleanup event held by the high school volunteers, Beaches Go Green and other nonprofit organizations. I found over ten examples of tobacco litter in one small part of Jacksonville Beach's shoreline. Removing tobacco products from beaches contributes to cleaner, safer and a more inviting environment. It would also help send the right message to our youth for that reducing smoke and vape exposure improves public safety and comfort for all. Remember, every time a child who attends Jacksonville Beach after school to play, work or relax. Are exposed to secondhand smoke from both vaping and tobacco products. Public outdoor spaces, especially beaches, must be safe and healthy for our youth to enjoy without risk to their future well-being. Communities still have the opportunity to set policies in place. Um, regarding e-cigarettes and other tobacco product use in public spaces. Please consider the limitation of these products on our local beaches and parks in order to commit to a healthier and inviting atmosphere for all. Thank you so much, have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mazzano, Diora Rasulova.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Diora Rasulova and I'm a high school student at Sandalwood High School. I'm also a member of Students Working Against Tobacco or SWAT Club. SWAT is a youth organization where we educate our peers and communities about the dangers of tobacco and nicotine. And advocate for policies that protect health, like the one you are considering tonight. I'm here tonight to thank you for your consideration of the Smoke-Free Beaches Ordinance. Protecting our beaches is important and we are very excited that you are considering this step. We support you moving forward with passing the ordinance, it will help keep our environment clean, protect wildlife and create a healthier place for families. Kids and visitors to enjoy. We also ask you to please consider adding electronic nicotine devices like vapes to the ordinance before the final vote. Vaping is becoming a big problem among young people and we are seeing vape litter like pods and disposable pens more and more on the beaches. These products also harm the environment and the chemicals inside them are dangerous to people, animals and our water. Right now, one in three youths in Duval County have tried a tobacco product and many of us have been exposed to secondhand smoke or vapor. Secondhand exposure to vape aerosols isn't just annoying, it can expose people, including young children, to harmful chemicals like nicotine. Heavy metals and lung irritants. Families shouldn't have to worry about their kids breathing in dangerous chemicals while trying to enjoy a day at the beach. If we wanna show young people that our beaches are a place for health and fun, not tobacco or vaping, it's important to include all tobacco products, including vapes. We ask that you vote in favor of the ordinance and consider adding vaping. By making the ordinance stronger, you can help protect the environment, protect kids like me and help make Jacksonville Beach a place where healthy choices are easy for everyone. Thank you again for everything you are doing, we're excited to see Jacksonville Beach make our beaches cleaner, safer and healthier for the future, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rasulova, Lillian Sullivan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Lillian and my address is seven thousand Powers Avenue. I'm a high school student at Samuel W. Wilson for high, School for Advanced Studies here in Duval County. I'm also involved with SWAT, which stands for Students Working Against Tobacco. Our goal is to empower young people like me to speak out against tobacco and vaping and to create he-. Healthy environments where it's ea- easier for everyone to make healthy choices. I would like to thank you all for considering making our beaches smoke-free, it's an important step and we're grateful for your leadership. Tonight, I want to talk about why it's so important to include electronic nicotine devices like vapes in the final ordinance. Many people think vaping is harmless, but it's not. Vape, vapes contain nicotine and other dangerous chemicals that can harm developing brains, especially for people my age. Most peo- most people who end up addicted to nicotine started using tobacco or vaping products before they turned eighteen. That's why it's so important that in public spaces, like our beaches, are free from smoking and vaping. Seeing people vape in public makes it seem normal and acceptable to young people. If vaping is allowed on the beaches, it sends the wrong message, that it's safe or no big deal, but it is a big deal. It's unhealthy and it's creating a new generation hooked on nicotine. Also, vapes aren't just a health problem, they're a pollution problem too. The disposable devices, pods and cartridges get left behind, littering the sand and harming our environment, just like cigarette butts do. And I know from personal experience, because my friends are, some of them have a smoking allergy. So whenever they're exposed to secondhand smoke, then they, like, they start to breathe, not be able to breathe. And like, in, in our bathrooms where students are smoking all the time and you see like groups that will like gather in these stalls. And no one is doing anything about it. Uh, we want Jacksonville Beach to be a place that encourages healthy choices, not addiction. We hope you'll consider adopting the Smoke-Free Beaches Ordinance and adding vapes so that all types of smoking are covered. Thank you for listening and protecting our community.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Mayor Glasser.
Good evening, everybody, it's nice to see all of you, Madam Mayor, council members. Chief, Mister City Manager and the staff, we appreciate what you do. So, like uh, these folks younger than me, um, I, I wanna thank you for taking up this ordinance. Uh, it's been three years incoming, uh, and. Provide a little bit of background here, and God knows, if one of you votes no after I speak, I'm never gonna come back, so um. Anyway, uh, when I was the mayor, I worked very aggressively to remove the preemption against regulating smoking. Uh, and after that was lifted in twenty twenty two, Atlantic Beach was the first jurisdiction to pass. Um, smoke, the, the ordinance on smoke-free zones in parks and on our beaches. And I like to use the word ban because that's just making it a negative thing, when we regulate activities that people have all the time. You've done it tonight with parking, we talked about life preservers, uh, I mean, there are just so many things that. These are, these are just rules that we have in living in a society and being safe, so. In any event, um, Atlantic Beach passed that ordinance soon after Ne- Neptune Beach did. Then Jacksonville passed uh, uh, Smoke-Free Zones in Parks. So, we, we are left here with Jacksonville Beach as the only jurisdiction in the county that doesn't have um, that restriction. So, I'm looking at the seal behind you, Mayor Hoffman, where it says First Coast's Finest Beach. So, let's live up to that, again, we talk about three beaches, one community. So, let's do something really significant for the county, you have the power to do that. To make these the first coast's finest beaches. So, uh, I, I really wanna thank you, uh, I hope you do this, I understand. The, the tension between family-friendly and tourism, but what kind of place do you wanna be? I would argue that's a clean, family-friendly place that is free of litter, of cigarette butts that kids are gonna pick up. Um, that does not have secondhand smoke on beaches, um, and that doesn't harm marine life. And harm people and encourages people not to start smoking. If you're serious, uh, you could also close the loophole that would be created by not adding vaping. So, you could, where it says um, smoking, you could add and vaping in the ordinance and, and really uh, close that loop. So, I encourage you to vote yes, again, I thank you. Um, on behalf of my mother who died of smoking-related uh, lung cancer, uh, let's, let's encourage. Healthy living for uh, this generation and the next, so thank you again, it's nice to see you all.
Thank you, Mayor Glasser, Katie Montalto.
Good evening, Mayor and Jacksonville Beach City Council Members, my name is Katie Montalto, thirty-five ninety-one Kernan Boulevard South. I'm a former University of North Florida student, a partnership member of Tobacco-Free Jacksonville. And one of many who value the well-being of our outdoor spaces and community. I'm here this evening to express support for adopting a comprehensive Smoke-Free Beach Ordinance, including a ban on electronic nicotine devices like vapes. First, I wanna thank the council for your leadership in adopting smoke-free park policies. Now is the time to take the next step and extend those protections to our beaches and to ensure this policy includes vaping products. Tobacco-related diseases remain the leading cause of preventable death in the U S and worldwide. In Duval County, one in nine youth between the ages of eleven and seventeen use tobacco or vape products. Nearly half report being exposed to secondhand smoke or vapor. What you see in public spaces matters, Smoke-Free Beaches send a clear message that we va- value health and that we're protecting the next generation. Cigarette butts remain the most littered item in the world, now disposable vapes are adding to the problem filled with plastic. Batteries and chemicals that don't break down. A tobacco-free beach will reduce litter, protect marine life and preserve our shoreline. Secondhand smoke increases the risk of lung cancer, heart disease and stroke. Vape aerosol contains heavy metals like lead and nickel and chemicals like formaldehyde. None of these belong in the lungs of kids or anyone trying to enjoy the beach. Kids are especially vulnerable and they deserve clean air and healthy outdoor spaces to explore, play and grow. Families are the heart of this community, they live, work, vote and pay taxes here. They deserve to enjoy our coastline without navigating toxic waste or inhaling no harmful chemicals. We also understand the challenges that are presented to individuals who are directly affected by nicotine addiction. We strongly believe this ordinance, ordinance will help support these individuals and protect the community's health. This ordinance isn't just about advocating for public health, it's about considering the kind of community we want to be. More than eighty cities across Florida have already adopted policies like this. Jacksonville Beach is currently the only beaches city in Duval County without a Tobacco-Free Beach Ordinance. Neighborhood Neptune Beach also restricts electronic nicotine devices. Neighboring Neptune Beach also restricts electronic nicotine devices in its ordinance. You have the opportunity tonight to show leadership and set an example for healthy, welcoming public spaces, especially with consideration for youth whom the tobacco industry continues to target. Tobacco-Free Jacksonville and our partners are ready to support public education and implementation. Your decision tonight can help create a safer, healthier, more welcoming beach for residents, visitors, and generations to come. I respectfully ask that you vote to adopt this ordinance and include electronic nicotine devices in the final policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montalto. Marlo Zarca.
Hello, Mayor. Marlo Zarca. My home address is fourteen thirty-one River Place Boulevard, but I'm also a proud business owner here in Jackson Beach at nine nine two Beach Boulevard. I'm here representing Blue Zones Project Jacksonville, as I'm the public policy lead for them, and we represent a partnership. So tonight, we had a partner of ours that was not able to attend, so she asked me to speak on her behalf. Her name is Vicki Bell. She is a respiratory therapist for over fourteen years and serves in higher education as a program director. She has spent countless hours speaking to anyone that would listen on the hazards of vaping. Vaping is not harmless. It is not a way to quit smoking, and it is causing permanent lung damage to users of all ages. And this is all backed by reliable evidence and research. The younger person ever, and the very first to receive a double-lung transplant, was a seventeen-year-old from Michigan who was an avid runner, and he had only vaped for a few months. When he became so ill that the only way to save his life was to put him on the transplant list. This was from vaping. Secondhand vape smoke carries all the same carcinogens. That's over seven thousand, carcinogens being cancer-causing metals and harmful chemicals that firsthand users are subjected to, even if you cannot see the vape cloud. This was new to me as I was doing this research on behalf of this topic. The incidence of asthma has increased, and treating asthma patients is more difficult if they vape as well. And the trash from these devices can get into the hands of small children and cause deadly results. Most calls to the Poison Corrode Center for young children are those who have accidentally ingested vape liquids. Little ones put everything in their mouths, and so it's our duty to protect them, especially when they are in public places. Please add Jacksonville Beach to the full list of beaches that promote long health and allow everyone to smell the great salty air without the impurities added by tobacco and vaping devices. You will not be taking away rights, but you will be giving back the right to everyone who visits Jacksonville Beach to breathe clean air while spending time with family, vacationing, and just enjoying all the things that Jacksonville Beach has to offer. On behalf of Vicki Bell and myself, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Zarca. Lewin Brunson.
Hi, Lewin Brunson, six three six six Longleaf Drive Drive, Jacksonville. Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor. My name is Lewin Brunson, public policy coordinator for Blue Zones Project Jacksonville. With Blue Zones being in full effect in Jacksonville right now, we have, thanks to the leadership of Baptist Health, Mayo Clinic, and UF Health, we have a unique opportunity to be involved in a reduction of chronic disease, improve quality of life, and boost our local economy. Therefore, we are supporting the ordinance to prohibit smoke-free beaches. Secondhand smoke is not just unpleasant, it's deadly. In Duval County, half of our youth report exposures to secondhand smoke or vapor, and children are especially vulnerable in these effects, which include asthma, slow lung development, and increased risk of respiratory illness. According to the CDC, thirty-four thousand non-smokers die each year from heart disease from secondhand smoke. Also, beyond the health, this aligns with our environmental goals. Of course, cigarette butts are the most littered item on earth right now, polluting our beaches and endangering our marine life. Also, disposable vapes and pods are emerging source of plastic and chemical waste on our beaches. Each cigarette's waste contains metal, batteries, and plastic cartridges. These products cannot biodegrade, even under the most severe conditions. So I say, please, let's join the other eighty Florida municipalities and do what's right for our environment, our families, and our future. And I respectfully urge you to vote in favor of Smoke-Free Beaches Ordinance, including restrictions and vaping and electronic devices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson. Michaela Swift.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Michaela Swift, and I attend Andrew Jackson High School. I'm president of my school SWAT club, and I also sit on the statewide youth advocacy board. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us tonight. And even more so, thank you for taking action to protect our community through the proposed Smoke-Free Ordinance. It means a lot to know that our voices matter, they matter, and that they're heard. I'm here to talk specifically about why including e-cigarettes and vapes in the ordinance is so important, especially for people my age. Vaping is something I see almost every day, whether that's at parks, on sidewalks, after school, outside. It's become so common that many teens barely think twice about it. But what we've learned is that these products are nothing short of harmless. They're filled with nicotine and chemicals that can hurt our developing brains and bodies. And to make matters worse, they're designed to be explicitly, they're explicitly designed to be addictive. Some of my classmates picked up a vape thinking it was just flavored water vapor, and now they're hooked. Some not even old enough to drive. That is not how youth should be introduced to the concept of addiction. Additionally, many people don't realize that secondhand vapor or aerosol isn't safe either. It contains harmful substances like heavy metals, ultrafine particles, and chemicals linked to lung disease. This leads to people nearby, including children and families, being exposed to these risks, even if they're not the ones using these products. Another priority is our environment. We've seen vape pods tossed, and the dunes are left behind on the sand. These things don't just disappear. They pollute our beaches, harm wildlife, and take away from the natural beauty people come to enjoy at our beach. By including e-cigarettes in the ordinance, you're showing that Jacksonville Beach stands for clean air, safe spaces, and the health of every visitor, no matter their age. I do want to thank you again for working toward a smoke-free future, and we're proud to be a part of this community, and even more so grateful for your leadership in helping make it safer and stronger for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Swift. That is the last speaker card. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of or against this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and request a motion.
I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eighty-two twenty-three in the second reading prohibiting smoking on the beach.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna offer an amendment. I'm a little disappointed we didn't do it in the first place, but I think it's the right thing to do. So an amendment to ordinance twenty twenty-five eighty-two twenty-three to read as follows. Section R specifically, no smoking. Smoking means inhaling, exhaling, burning, carrying, or possessing any lighted tobacco product or electronic nicotine or vaping product, including cigarettes, cigars, pipe tobacco, electronic pens, e-cigarettes, and any other lighted tobacco or electronic vaping product. In accordance with Florida Statute three eighty-six dot two zero nine, smoking does not include the use of unfiltered cigars.
Second. We have a motion and several seconds. Mr. City Attorney.
I just, I wasn't sure what the language of that, how that amendment was gonna read. I think the way it's read, we are fine in terms of what's called. It's not a substantial or material change to the ordinance. I was piping in in case I had to say we had to re-advertise, but it's my opinion based on this amendment. If it does pass, we're good to proceed in this meeting without having to go back to the drawing board. Just wanted to chime in on that.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Madam Clerk, are you good with that language? And could you, did you capture everything?
I did not capture everything. I can do it word for word based on the recording.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. To amend, Ms. Golding.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Sutton, for offering that amendment, because I was going to if you didn't. Because in our last meeting, I brought this up, that I felt like we needed to consider vaping. And I just want to say that I think, I know that we don't prohibit vaping in our parks. So with this being, with this being said, I think we need to look at that going forward, but I fully support the amendment.
Mr.?
Thank you, Mayor. As a longtime educator, it does my heart good to see our young people stepping up to the plate and trying to make a difference in this world. Congratulations. We're very proud of you.
Any other comments on the proposed amendment? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, amendment passes. Back to the original motion. Any further discussion, Mr. Jansen?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few things. One, I do believe secondhand smoke is carcinogenic. I'm not a big fan of it. I'm glad it was removed from restaurants and certain locations, that's for sure. I don't like the litter that's on our beach because of cigarette butts and that type of thing. I also think that if this were to go on a referendum, it would pass overwhelmingly. I can't say I don't have a crystal ball, but I think if I had a crystal ball, that's what it would say. I always look at a lot of the, to the point that Mayor Glass was making, whenever these items come in front of us, I look at this kind of as a three-pronged, you know, does it make our city safer? Does it improve quality of life, and is there a financial impact to it? So those type of things come to my mind when I'm reviewing these. I also want to thank Marlo Zarca for taking time out a few months ago to sit down with me, and we had a lengthy conversation. I asked her to do some research on other cities throughout the state, and she did that for me and provided that information. So I do appreciate the work that she put in there. As a representative of all people, I do get concerned at times about government overreach. I'm conservative by nature, and I like to make sure that the government overreach isn't invasive. And so I always keep that in the back of my mind when it comes to things like this. I will be supporting this tonight, but I just want to make that known for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Jansen. Ms. Golding.
Just real quick, I wanted to follow up on what Mr. Jansen said about the referendum. I wish there would be a referendum, because I would like to see the referendum also include cigars, because the state exempted, or, you know, carved out cigars. And honestly, cigars are just as bad as any, anything else. And I'm sad that we are not able to do anything about that because the state, but I'm glad that we're passing this tonight. Thank you. Or I hope we're passing this tonight, should I say.
Seems like the odds are good. Any other questions or comments? I want to thank you all, the speakers, who stuck it out there till the end. It sounds like your comments did have some impact, because we had debated in workshops and in our prior meeting on the inclusion of e-cigarettes and vaping. And I do want to say for Mayor Glasser that we did jump right on parks when the preemption was lifted, but we did drag our feet a little bit on beaches. We wanted to see what other communities did. We are the largest beach. We have the most probably diverse population in terms of visitors and tourists and people from all across our region. Then certainly our neighbors to the north, who tend to be much more residential. So we knew it was going to be a bigger lift. But I have to say, I haven't gotten a single email or phone call against this ordinance. So I think that that just kind of shows you where we are as a community and a society in preserving the cleanliness, the healthy options that we have here at our beaches, and how important that is to not just Jacksonville Beach residents, but to all of those who come out and utilize our beaches year-round. So I'm glad that we are taking it up now. I do agree. I don't even know if we even talked about vapes at that time, because they were not as big and prolific as they really are now. So I agree with Ms. Golding that we should revisit parks. Maybe we give it a minute, though, since we've put a lot of effort into this one. So any other questions or comments from council discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Have a good night. Be safe.